That was a good thing.
Is it just us tonight? Okay.
Wow.
Heart club.
For the presentation.
So we're going to ask you any questions while you're here.
Yeah, they just can't, and I'm going to say something to the audience, okay?
Yeah, it does say that. I never get calls, but I've been.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean over here, the printed version?
I can't stand you. What is my password?
Oh, God.
Yes, ma'am?
No.
No, you're not ready.
Okay, I set it up. Airplane just to make sure it doesn't go off.
Okay. Yeah.
Where are all the suntans? From your week off? Nobody went to Florida? Oh, Ruben did too, oh.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I was here too.
We will begin momentarily.
Union doesn't even have it off, so we never go. They teach through it. May first.
It's already important to do. Yeah, no, that's okay, yeah, that's okay.
The public, the public, the following week. We might be in the 27th.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the February 28th, 2024 Work Session Meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, VP. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Any discussion, additions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the agenda for February 28th, 2024 carries. Tonight, due to the Board Superintendent's search update and an executive session, the Board will submit written comments for the presentation. So there won't be any verbal comments today or questions. The questions and responses will be available for public access and review at a later date. We will now begin with our first presentation, which is the Second Quarter Academic Report, presented by Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning Dr. Lorinda Chisholm and her team. Welcome.
Superintendent Soler, Board President Rivera, esteemed Board members, community members, good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the Office of Teaching and Learning, we'd like to present our Second Quarter Academic Report based on the mid-year I-Ready academic assessment data. And I just want to preface this report by reminding everyone to please keep in mind this is the middle-of-year benchmark assessment. And so what we're looking for at this point is the growth from the beginning of the year over time. And keeping in mind that we do not expect all of our students to be at grade level at this point as they have not yet had full exposure to the full-year course content. So with that, we have Rebecca Gleason, our Assistant Director of ELA and Library Services, to share the reading results. And Mr. Kovell is away doing teacher recruitment right now. So in his place, we have Erica McFarland, the Director of Intervention Services, to present mathematics. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to show me what button? Just go this way? This one?
Nope, nope. That's the wrong button. Which one, do I push the middle when it's time? Okay. Thanks. So, good evening. As Dr. Chisholm said, we're going to talk about our I-Ready results tonight. Obviously, when we think about our pillars, this is a huge part of moving towards our student and graduate success that we want to see for our students. I'm going to stop touching the clicker. Okay, you can keep going. The next one for me. Thank you. So just before we dig into the specific reading and math results, this is some overview information from our winter administration. Obviously, our participation rates, when we talk about testing, are important for us. And so our goal has been at least 90% of students. And you can see by our completion rates there for our K-8 students who took the winter assessment. We did achieve that with over 92% of our students in both reading and math. Something else that we look for are those rush flags. It's an indicator to us that a student is rushing through the test. And so it's really important to keep that number low. I-Ready tells us that anything less than 5% is really good. And so you can see by how minute those numbers are. And we do maybe attribute a little bit of that to the fact that this is our second year of administration of I-Ready. So our students knew a little bit more what to expect from the test. And we did include some highlights down below, again, just focusing on the celebrations around those completion rates. So kudos to Kane and Lincoln, 99% completion of reading, and Pleasant Valley and Lincoln for 99% completion on the math. And again, this is important to us because in order to have accurate data and to make strong decisions based on this data, we want to see that our students are taking the test, right? So we have as much information as we can. I will just give a shout out to Jane really quick. She was in the superintendent's brief, so you've seen that picture before. Poetry Out Loud is something that districts have participated in for a really long time. And Jane, as a ninth grader from Schenectady High School, participated in the regional competition and won, and is going to represent our region at the state on March 9th. So, that's super exciting, yeah. And so much credit, because if you haven't been, the kids, they get really into it. It is acting out of the poem and bringing it to life. And she did an awesome job, so. And we are going to start by looking at our district overall data. We had 4,606 students tested fall and winter. So there may have been some students who tested in the fall and not winter, or winter and not fall. But because, to Dr. Chisholm's point, we are looking at growth, we are only looking at the students who took both of those assessments. And so from 13% green in the fall, you can see that we moved to 22%. And that change in placement is moving in the right direction. This is overall for our students in grades 1 through 8. And so while our kindergartners did take the winter assessment, that was their first iteration of it. Last year, you might remember that we had them take it later than the rest of the group. And then we did have them repeated in winter. We felt like that was not the best decision for them developmentally. So they took it for the first time in the winter, and we will see their growth metrics in the spring. So this is just for our students in grades 1 through 8. And again, yellow is one grade level below, meaning the students are approaching grade level. And as the note indicates on the slide, and I believe Michelle printed out some information for you around the colors and what that means, this data is based on what students are expected to know at the grade level. And so we need to consider the cumulative knowledge of skilled reading, right, across that time. So our goal, of course, is to move our students from red to green. But even yellow at this point midway through the year, you know, we understand that means our students are on the way. Our next slide gives us a closer look at our elementary students' performance by grade level. And so obviously, you can see that each grade showed growth, right, with more students demonstrating grade-level performance. Here, we do want to highlight for our second and third graders the change that we see, right, from 12% to 26%, and from 19% in the fall to 33% respectively for those two grades. This is so important because it is key to get our students reading on grade level by the end of grade three, right? We've talked about it before, but it is statistically significant if students are on grade level in reading by the end of third grade. And so to see those jumps happening there, that's really important to us. And that's also why we focused our opportunity on our first graders. As a reminder, right, our first graders can't be too far below grade level, right? They're not there yet. But we want to really work to move all of those students to green. And so some of the things we have in place are the explicit instruction that our students get through Foundations and Haggerty, which is all about those foundational literacy skills. Next, this one shows us our middle school students. And we understand that normally we see a slower progression at the higher grades, right? As they get older, it is a little bit more challenging to close that gap. And still, we see growth, at least some growth, at all three grades. But the work continues because we know we need to see more of it. We need to decrease the number of students who are multiple grade levels below. We know that this impacts every aspect of their academic performance and of their school experience, right? And so that is a huge focus for us. Specifically on this slide, we pointed to our eighth-grade students, again, because this is such a huge transition for them when they leave middle school and go to high school. So just wanted to highlight a couple of the things we're really focused on for them. Our Tier One grade-level curriculum. We talk a lot about the importance of putting grade-level rigorous text in front of all of our students. We've spent a lot of time talking about vocabulary, access, and development because that increases comprehension for students. We brought in professional development this fall, and not just for our ELA teachers, for our social studies teachers too, right? Because we know that these things don't just live in the English classroom. Certainly, our literacy coaches. We have one at Mount Pleasant, Amy Tyler. We have one at Oneida, Nicole Hannan. But they are developing things that we use across all three buildings. But certainly, at the buildings where they work, they're able to do work with PLCs around data meetings and looking more closely at some of these pieces. So that, again, it's not just our ELA teachers really digging into this data and what our students need to do to improve. And currently, we are looking at having an ELA consultant come in to really focus on this middle level because it is a unique experience for our students, right? Really trying to get them to engage with the work, with the learning, and help them to continue developing that literacy, and especially around differentiation. Through our school reviews that we have done through that experience, we keep coming back to how are we differentiating for our students so we can scaffold up for them to access that grade-level, that grade-level material. Now, we're looking at the relative placement by race and ethnicity. Again, for all students, 1 through 8. While we see growth for each group, we recognize that it is not enough. We do have research-based curriculum in place. And I previously referenced Foundations and Haggerty for those foundational pieces. But we obviously also have wit and wisdom for our comprehensive literacy curriculum. All of these things come with high expectations that our students can and will perform those grade-level tasks. Now, we need to continue the work with teachers around the science of reading and the implementation of these curriculums with integrity in every classroom, right? We have to make sure that all students, and I emphasize "all", are receiving strong Tier One instruction. Research says that 95% of students, and again, I say "all" students, can learn to read with explicit instruction around not just decoding and word recognition, but around language comprehension as well. And so that is a huge area of focus for us, is making sure that our classroom teachers have what they need in that area to support our students with that work. Additionally, we are trying to strengthen our resources in the form of culturally responsive instruction. I've referenced before our Rising Voices curriculum because it's not just that we want our students to be able to read. We want them to want to read, right? We want them to like it. And so the Rising Voices curriculum, which is an authentic text for our students to access, is something that we hope will be part of that experience. And at the secondary level currently, we are in the process of gathering a secondary literacy committee, which, again, will not just be English and reading teachers, but will encompass people from across different grade levels and different content areas so that we can work on revamping our secondary literacy plan. We have one that I think was probably like 2016. And so we want to connect back to that and think about our next steps. Next, we see the outcomes for our students with disabilities. We do see the improved placement, but we need to drastically increase the number of students reading on grade level. And again, the Tier One curriculum, about which I already spoke, is key. We need to make sure that that's in place and that's happening with fidelity so that we can implement the Tier Two supports that our students with disabilities might need to build upon that primary instruction. Again, there is no substitution for the direct explicit instruction of our literacy skills. Of course, especially with our students with disabilities, we consider the whole child and all that they need to then access that learning. On this final slide, we see the relative placement of our English language learners from fall to winter. And while we know we need to move more students to grade-level proficiency, the decrease in the number of students two or more grade levels below is significant, right? Seeing a 13% shift, right? 30 students moving from fall to winter is very positive. And so, again, kudos to Leah Akinleya and her talented team of ENL teachers who have done a lot of work in this area. And also, we have made sure that our Tier One curriculum does come with resources specifically targeted towards our multilanguage learners. And all of our ENL teachers have access to those resources, as well as the digital geodes that our K-2 teachers use. We have those accessible for our teachers, our ENL teachers working with our English language learners. And so now Erica.
We'll talk about math. I don't know who those cuties are on there. I didn't get to pick my picture, but they sure are cute. Okay, so we're going to start in the same fashion that Becky went through literacy. We're going to talk about math. This first slide shows growth, first through eighth grade, again, kindergarten, you'll see in the spring. We're seeing the trends in the right direction. We always want to see that yellow and that green increasing as we go across. And hopefully, the red is decreasing. As Becky indicated, our goal is to continuously target those students in the red. So right now, after we've given this benchmark, schools are looking at AIS case loads and really making sure that students who are in that red are getting the AIS services that they need. Next slide. So if we look by grade level, this slide, I think, is exciting because if you look at it, first through fourth grade are all 50% of our students are where they need to be. So we're heading in the right direction. And if you do the math, fifth is only at 48%. So more than half of our kids are where they need to be, which is great. Something to consider, when I spoke to Mr. Kovell, what do you want me to talk about, is that math is a little bit different than literacy. Whereas literacy kind of spirals up, and, you know, those literacy, reading, and writing skills move up, math is a little bit more skill-based. And so as the skills get more complex as students move from first all the way up through fifth grade, it is possible that they may not have gotten to all the units yet on all the concepts. So I-Ready is testing them on all of the skills that they should have by the end of that grade level. So it is possible that, you know, those students may not have completed those units yet. So we're hoping that we'll see different outcomes in the spring. One of our primary goals of adopting the new math curriculum, which, thank you very much, at the last meeting, the Board approved, is that we will have a current curriculum that is consistently implemented across the district, but also pacing will be consistent as well. So it'll be easier for us to monitor it, knowing that everybody has all the training and everything that they need, and being able to monitor those assessments a little more closely. And one thing we just wanted to talk about is that our elementary schedule was designed specifically to provide a full hour of math support for students to get their core instruction. But we also have a full 30 minutes, K through 5, for students to get small-group targeted instruction. So that might entail students being split up across the grade level. All of the schools have that at the same time, where some students are going with an AIS math teacher, some students may be going with a special education teacher, and then the classroom teacher is targeting students as well. So those are supposed to be fluid groups that are changing based on students' needs. And I'm anticipating that those have just changed recently with the last benchmark that we just gave. So this slide has a lot more red than we want to see on it. It's definitely not where we want to be. It is trending in the right direction. But it is important to note that that curriculum is K through 8. So one of the other benefits of having a consistent K-8 curriculum, which we have not had up until next year, is that students will be having common language, common learning routines, all the way up, starting from kindergarten. So that's a really positive trend we're excited about. Another thing to note is that this type of assessment is designed so that students go until they fail. So students actually get 50% of the questions, they keep going until they fail 50% of the questions. It works, it's a dynamic assessment, and it really works to kind of see where the kids are, going back up and down to get a precise score. What that means, though, is that students might be frustrated a little bit when they're taking this, right? They might feel a little bit, maybe not as motivated to take it, so that's something to consider. We also know that middle schoolers may be less motivated to take these assessments. So one thing we really try to work with teachers to do, and I think teachers have done a good job on, is monitoring those flags. So we have had more flags, those rush flags, in middle school, but they are significantly down. So teachers are monitoring, asking students to stop, slow down, take it again if they need to. But also, I lost my train of thought, sorry, motivation, tracking. Oh, having data talks with students. Really helping students understand how important this assessment is and that they really should, you know, take their time, be ready for it, and having some goal setting that they're doing for that. And then we're hoping that what they're doing when they're getting their scores now is that they're sitting down with the students reviewing those scores and then setting a goal for the next iteration that we're doing in the spring. We do have math AIS in all three buildings, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so case loads might be shifting a little bit now to maximize those. And while we don't have a math coach in middle school yet, we have a person who's interested in that, and it's a hiring thing. So Mike, right now, is at Cortland, and we are hoping he finds a math teacher because we're ready to have that coach ready, you know, to jump right in and work across the middle schools. Sorry, okay. This set of data is concerning to us. The trends we're seeing here are similar to trends we saw in the ELA slides as well. While the data is trending in the right direction, you can see that the percentage of Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino or two or more races are placing two or more years below grade level as higher than those that are Asian or white. As we've been looking at our curriculum, one of the things we did when we built the rubric to identify the next curriculum for math was we made sure that we had indicators that address differentiation, culturally responsive education or teaching. And of the five rubric indicators, I-Ready Math was the highest, and it was the highest for culturally responsive, and it was the highest for differentiation. We know those are important things so that we can really reach our most vulnerable learners and address those disparate outcomes. For students with disabilities, this data is showing us that they are moving in the right direction. But again, not where we want them to be. Our next step for this is, I did dig a little bit today into some of the I-Ready. And there are some special education classrooms where students are really making accelerated growth. So hopefully, working with Jess Allen's office and looking at where are those classrooms where those students with disabilities really are making accelerated growth, and how can we look at those best practices the teachers are using and replicate those. And then for our English language learners, so the N here is a little, it's small, it's about 226 students. But if you look at it, you can see that the percentage of Ls who moved up into that yellow or that, the green, more than doubled since fall. So that's really got a trend in the right direction that we're happy to see. We have had a very big focus on training around how to support English language learners. This summer, we had somebody come in who focused on English language learners, supporting them through math. And then our Superintendent's Conference Day in the fall, we had all K through 5 teachers had some professional development around that. That is one of our DCEP goals for DCEP Goal Number Two, so that is something we're really focusing on. Okay, so what now what? I'm going to start over here with math. Again, we're starting really early with this math curriculum. It's for next year, but we have our first training already in just a couple of weeks. We want teachers to have time to learn about the curriculum, dig into the curriculum. They will have access to the curriculum after that date so they can start to try some of the lessons and really become familiar with it. Mike has been working with the I-Ready consultants, and they are going to help support the implementation very similarly to how wit and wisdom has helped us with our implementation of, our curriculum associates has helped with wit and wisdom. I'm sorry, great minds. We have seen a lot of success because with the implementation of a new ELA program, we've really devoted a lot of time to that implementation, making sure that principals feel comfortable, teachers feel comfortable, coaches feel comfortable. So we're really trying to do that for math. Our math coaches are going, I think, I'm not sure if it's before the 13th or not, but they're going to a neighboring district to observe that new curriculum in action. So they're going to speak with teachers, speak with leaders, you know, try to find out what works, what doesn't work, and get a little bit of insight from people who have used it already. We are, again, always looking for more math coaches. We do have some opening in elementary and the one in middle school, so we're looking for that. And hopefully, next year, we'll be able to fill all of those positions. And then finally, Mike talked a little bit about this at the last board meeting, but we did recently purchase an evidence-based math intervention called Bridges, and it's very, very highly received. Our math AIS teachers like it a lot. It's very explicit, there's assessments that go with it, and it really breaks down for students so they can really get those foundational skills. So what we're going to try to do next year is purchase that for our special education teachers. So they also have that. So that's K-5. And then we're also going to look next year for a more explicit, evidence-based math intervention program for 6 through 8 so that we have something that is a little more systematic, something we can measure a little more accurately.
So since Erica ended talking about interventions, that's where I'll start. And the second point under literacy is around our resources and interventions. We have a commitment to AIS for our students in grades 3 through 8. And so we've talked a couple of times throughout our slides tonight about making sure that we're really intentional, about how our students get scheduled for that so that the right students are getting the intervention that they need. Of course, we also have reading intervention for students in grades K through 8. And you'll see at the end of that, it talks about 95% group and Power Up, which are the two intervention programs that our reading specialists use to support that. Both evidence-based programs to support that work. Additionally, we've talked before about our decodable libraries. But we have spent significant effort and energy and finances to making that happen because our teachers need those resources to really work with the skill-based instruction of reading. And so we have those in every elementary school now. We are working on getting some more of that available in the middle school in a way that does not feel like a decodable, right? Because sixth graders do not want to read a decodable.
Does that, does that feel like what?
They do not want to read a decodable, right? It feels like it's a little kid book. And so we really are working on like high interest, but important readability, so the students can still be working on their, on their skills. Erica also referenced some of the work we've done around our wit and wisdom implementation. And this year, all eleven of our elementary principals participated in our cohort model of guided observation, so we changed it up for this year. Each building hosted around, but the principals were engaged at multiple sessions across different buildings. And so this really allowed us to have the opportunity to see wit and wisdom instruction across multiple classrooms in every building while we focused on the essential question, which was how do leaders support teachers in strengthening implementation? And so that's been a huge focus for us. Again, collectively, we were able to observe classrooms, but we were also able to do student work analysis. And what does that tell us, and how do we norm what we're seeing across different buildings? And we went through a process to internalize some of the content within the modules so that principals have a real strong understanding of how the program is designed, right? So they can lead it in their building and answer questions. And actually, Carrie got to participate in a round today, she hosted us at Kane. But this really provided principals the chance to dig into the work, not in isolation, but with their colleagues, right? They're seeing the same things, they could problem solve together, and so that was really beneficial. And our implementation lead from Great Minds was really able to differentiate that experience for us in a way that I feel like we have our next steps even without her being there to lead it, right? To do our own observations, our own walkthroughs, and continue that work together. And next, for our coaches, we have six currently at the elementary level. They will be participating in a similar professional development that's designed to specifically support their work at the classroom level. And with the last one, we just want to reiterate the importance of knowledge building for our teachers, right? And for our administrators, making sure that they have all the tools that they need to do the very important work about which we speak tonight. So we will continue to work to build knowledge around the science of reading, whether it is through the micro-credential at SUNY New Paltz, which has been, you know, shared with our administrative team, or the letters training that's facilitated at BOSI's. And we, I referenced at our last board report that there are a number of us who are currently participating in that, and that's the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. Of course, then through our own PD offerings that we will continue to do for teachers, for administrators, and even what we're trying to do in our community through our Right to Read event, and just making sure people have the information they need to support their students, but also be advocates, right, for what our, for what our students should have. And so then we move to our both, oh, sorry, one more, just the bottom half of that. We're almost done. There you go. So some more, you know, programmatic things that we're looking to do. So as we review our results, we did notice inconsistencies in how people are accessing the personalized instruction that comes with the math and reading programs in iReady. So we want to look at that with our building leaders and our instructional coaches to ensure that students are getting access they need. If it's an issue of technology, can we get them what they need? Erica referenced earlier, small group, is that a time where kids could spend a short period of time engaged with that platform? Because it gives them work targeted at the specific skills on which they underperformed on the assessment. So how can we better utilize that to support that individualized instruction that our students need?
So another thing that we know is very important for us to do is to, when we look at those slides where we see the, our demographic groups, we know that we need to get together and we need to look at how our students of color are doing in the district, and we need to start looking for root causes and really developing some clear action plans around that. So that is something that would be a collaboration between district and building levels, but that is a big priority for us. Also, I think you know about our DTSTE, which is the diagnostic tool for school and district effectiveness. All of our schools that were identified as CSI schools and our receivership school have gone through this. We have gone through nine, we have one left, and that is MLK. It's important to note that we're in collaboration with the Office of Planning and Accountability that our assistant director for math in ELA have been on every single one of those. So through those reviews, they're looking for trends in both of those areas. I've been on a lot of them, you know, really looking at the AIS. Leah Akinleya has been on those, looking at, you know, trends for Ls. Special education administrators have been on that, really looking at how our students with disabilities are doing. So we're looking at that data and really talking about how we're gonna support buildings. Buildings are already taking action, some of them had dates the next, the next week. We need you to do this by then, but we're also looking at how the district can support buildings as well around that. And then finally, we're, like, we've talked about this a couple of times, we're really looking at our AIS case loads to really maximize those. If we see a teacher only has four kids in their classroom, scheduling is challenging in the middle school. So I just met with a middle school today and said, we gotta look at, you know, we have space here. I know it's challenging to move those schedules around mid-year, but we really have to make sure kids are getting what they need. So that is a priority, especially after this mid, mid-year benchmark. That's, that's it for us. I believe that, Andrea, are you next?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna turn our attention to student attendance. And I do have something up on the screen on the header slide here, which is data released from U.S. Department of Education in December twenty-three. Shows that fourteen point seven million students were chronically absent in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Districts have been showing slow signs of rebounding. And the reason I bring this up is because Schenectady is not immune to this national crisis. When looking at our data, you'll see it over the course of the next few slides. We are seeing attendance rates that are better than last year, but in a similar trend as what we saw last year, we are seeing decreases in attendance from quarter one to quarter two. In this first slide, you can see the overall student rate and attendance comparison from quarter one to quarter two of this school year. A positive is that Paige Woodlon and Zoller are all maintaining over eighty-five percent student rate in attendance. However, elementary buildings did see a decrease in student rate and attendance from quarter one to quarter two. And as I just mentioned, that is a similar trend we also saw last year. The next slide shows how the student rate and attendance quarter two of this year compares to quarter two of last year. And all of the elementary buildings show an increase in attendance this year. Kane showed a four point eight six attend, increase in student rate and attendance this year, and Van Corleter had a four point three nine increase. In a few minutes, I will be asking Principal Messler to say a few words about the work that her school has been doing to tackle student attendance, to include the ways in which having a full-time attendance specialist at Kane has impacted that work. The next slide shows the overall student rate and attendance from quarter one to quarter two this year for grade six to twelve. And you see a similar trend as we saw in the elementary. Middle schools, the Early College High School, Big Pick, and Stuymetz Career and Leadership Academy all show decreases in attendance rate for this period. However, we do see an increase for Schenectady High School and Washington Irving. When we compare how the overall student rate and attendance looks last year, quarter two compared to quarter two this year, we see all buildings showed an increase in student rate and attendance. Washington Irving showed the greatest growth at thirty-eight point seven three percent. And Early College High School has the highest student rate and attendance of ninety-six point oh nine percent. Next slide. When we look at chronic absenteeism, by grade level for grades one through eight, we see the percent of students consider, considered chronically absent increase in all grade levels, consistent with what we're seeing with the average rate of daily attendance. We have a lot of work to do in this area. Chronic absenteeism, as you know, is when a student has missed more than ten percent of school. And in our data, there are some students who maybe have met the threshold where they won't be able to recover from being considered chronically absent if they've missed enough days, and others who are gonna be able to be recoverable in this data as we move forward. Next slide. When you compare the chronic absenteeism of this grade band from quarter two last year to quarter two of this year, we do see all grade levels showed a decrease in the percentage of students chronically absent. Grade four, eighteen point four seven percent, and grade six had a sixteen point nine four percent. Showed, those who showed the greatest decreases. You go to the next slide, please. And when we look at the same data for grades nine through twelve, we see similar trend as elementary. All grade levels had an increase from quarter one to quarter two in the percentage of students considered chronically absent. Next slide. And when we look at that comparison, again, quarter two to quarter two of this year, grade level, grade eleven is about the same. Grade twelve has had decreases, and grades nine and ten have had some increases. So definitely some intentional work to do around those grade levels in nine and ten. So some of the work ahead includes continued support for buildings, aligning the practices of those that are outlined in the Student Attendance Intervention Guide to include regular data meetings and implementing appropriate tiered attendance interventions. We need to continue working on communicating with our families the importance of good school attendance and ensuring they have awareness of the resources that are available to help them with barriers that they might be experiencing. And lastly, as we move into budget season, we may want to consider to increase the number of attendance and engagement specialists. We currently have ten full-time positions on the attendance team. Most of them provide support to multiple buildings. With Kane being in receivership, Principal Messler strongly advocated to have a full-time attendance specialist at Just Kane. So I have asked her to just say a few words about the impact that this has had on the work that they're doing there.
Good evening. So I think I did a little bit of a shout-out last month when one of our, the attendance engagement specialist actually was recognized with an award as part of our HR work, because Brittany Piccolo was amazing. We have since secured a new attendance engagement specialist, Naomi Greggs. So we're really excited for her to join our team now. This is her, what, third day? So we're really excited about the work that she's gonna pick up from where Brittany left off. But some of the things that we've done, that we will certainly continue to carry through, is really thinking about positive reinforcement with students and families. So, you know, we do as much as we can to possibly hype up attendance. And so we do this like via Parent Square. We do it through our NBA, which is the Never Been Absent Club. So tomorrow's our PBIS assembly at Kane Elementary School, and we'll play a little like Welcome to the NBA Jams. Sometimes I do a little dance routine, but, you know, some people, including myself, get a little embarrassed by my moves. So I try to keep them minimal, because I don't wanna make anybody feel too bad. But we do it, welcome new students into the NBA each month, and so that's really exciting for us. And then we pushed out some videos via Parent Square as well about the importance of attendance and things that help to think about, like, it's flu season. Don't forget these things, or, you know, healthy night's sleep is really great for anybody. So we do try to push as much information out as we can, just as, and proactively is. You know, we're heading into stomach bug season, so things to think about. And then certainly monthly messages that we do with monthly incentives. We also do most improved each month with a certificate to recognize that as well, because we are always looking for progress. We do a fourth, we did a fourth grade challenge most recently, because when we study our data, we recognize that fourth grade was kind of a hotspot for us, so we wanted to identify some things. So we made a specific fourth grade challenge, and we had teams go into the fourth grade classes and have, they circled up and just kind of engaged in what we call restorative circles. But it was really more of a conversation around attendance and why it's important. And so the, you know, students can all kind of participate in that, and what are some of the things that kind of get in the way? For things that we call like behavioral or refusal. So sometimes there's moments, and I'm sure parents in the audience can recognize, that sometimes our little ones don't want to get out of bed or have some hard times getting to school for a variety of reasons. And so we offer home visits that we do in the morning. And if parents are open to it, we might have some of our staff be willing to model some strategies of how do we get into this, not into a power struggle, but how do we engage in this conversation? To talk about maybe, if we're feeling anxious about getting to school, how do we talk about, like, what will it feel like as we get through the doors and we get into the school? What can we look forward to when we come into our classrooms? So we do offer those opportunities. We collaborate really often with the classroom teachers to help differentiate by each individual teacher and each individual student need, because every single circumstance is unique. I think oftentimes when we try to look at what's causing a child to be absent, there is a multitude of reasons. It feels like a giant knot that we're trying to pull back layers to find out. So each response is really differentiated to the needs of the, either the teacher or the family. We work on reward charts. Both, we have reward charts in school and also reward charts for home, if parents are interested, and also upholding something that we do at school. And then we do have video game Friday, and we call this our most improved attendance. And spoiler alert, it's never really random of who gets chosen on, on these types of video gaming Fridays. So we do that experience for a short, brief moment of time. And we're finding that to be very successful and motivating for students. Consistency and follow-through with communication, ensuring partnerships with the teacher to make sure the messaging is very common. Assisting with clothing, food, housing, connecting with community resources, and then following up within a day or two of saying, like, how did that go? You know, is that helping? And then using a familial need as an entry place to support families. So if this is something that you need, we work to help you get that, target that, and then it opens up a conversation oftentimes. Collaborating with outside providers, if something's health-related, for example, like asthma, getting documentation to our nurse, the release consent, reaching out directly to providers. Asthma is oftentimes a reason we hear, it's really hard to breathe. And then there's a multitude of layers that complicate that when we enter into the school day, but that's a common reason. And sometimes it's just like, how do we talk about having the puffers at school? And what does that look like? And that we understand and recognize, you know, what it might look like when your child is presenting with a need for asthma. And these are our protocols and procedures if something was to happen at school. I mean, I think some of, like, like, demystifying some of those unknowns maybe for parents, that might have caused some anxiety, I think is also helping overall. And then making referrals to known, accessible providers. So this isn't just kind of like, hey, we want you to call this organization. We'll say, hey, when you call this organization, you're gonna talk to Tammy, Tammy's gonna connect you to so-and-so. And I think that that personalized attention, making sure that we call ahead to say, who will they speak to? When they get that and when they call into you. And I think that that sometimes helps make that phone call a little bit easier, because they know who they're asking for and trying to speak to. We also do call ahead and ask if they have availability for this specific age or this particular insurance that parents might carry. So we help to support with those types of conversations as well. And then we try to make really clear visualizations, like with a stoplight system of red, yellow, and green, of what it means to miss, you know, a day, multiple days, a week at a time. And I think helping clarify, like, what does that mean in the sense of work, right? Because sometimes the kids come in and they're like, did I miss anything? It's like, I think that that feels like the world froze for them, you know? But school did go on, we learned a couple of letters in kindergarten and first grade those days. We learned a couple vowel sounds, and so those are really important things that, you know, you might have missed. And plus, we missed you as a class, and that's really important for us. We work with our social work and psychologists to really kind of help close the knowledge gaps that exist. So, you know, when we speak about what are the misconceptions that people might have, that I didn't miss anything when I wasn't here. You know, we really work tightly to make those really clear. And then really collaborating to determine who's the best person to call. Like, who has the strongest relationship with this family to really personalize the experience? We also are doing some advocacy outside of the school. So we have met with city council, we attend Department of Social Services with families alongside of them, and we navigate the processes with them to be support in attending any of these things. I think if somebody's just saying, we're, we're with you with this, you know, we'll help you navigate this pretty complex system sometimes. Sometimes that's an eyeglass appointment where we're being brushed to the side, but we're saying, nope, we're here with mom. We're doing this, we're getting some glasses, and this is what we have. Or even the vaccine appointment work that we did at the beginning of the year. We also do makeup time, so some people are like, hey, if I wasn't in the NBA. And so while the state might identify someone as unrecoverable in school, and for us, no one's unrecoverable. And so we think about makeup time. So maybe you didn't get into the NBA this month, but if you came to STEAM camp, then you are then back into your number of days that you should have been here. Or if you come to one of our STEAM Saturdays or STEM Saturday, or you participate, maybe you came to trunk or treat, or maybe you went to a May Day or different types of events we have. We're gonna count that, because that's engagement with school as well. So that's our own hybrid system inside of our school. And then we do have an attendance para as well. She helps to troubleshoot entry reporting on a daily basis. She fills in gaps, anywhere that's needed, if we have a substitute teacher or something like that. So our attendance records are really tight and accurate. So it's like, our data that we're looking at is really of the minute that we're looking at it. And really, whenever we have an event at school, like, you know, we talk about it as a party at Kane. We really try to reach out to the families that have been struggling to attend. Um, we really try to reach out to the families that have been struggling to attend, to come and we invite them personally to say, you know, come to this event. And oftentimes that event while we're breaking bread and having snacks together is a great opportunity for us to sidle up to you and just have a nice gentle conversation. And I think the attendance engagement specialist is the best person to do that because sometimes no one wants to like sidle up next to the principal. Um, because it feels punitive in some ways. And so having somebody that's just been in your home, sat on your couch, brought you to an appointment is one of the best people that can talk to you because now they're your friend. Um, and so that's kind of how we look at it at Kane.
Thank you.
Um, and then I will turn it over to Tracy.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Mr. DiCaprio asked me to present on the um, accountability statuses for the schools. And what a great follow-up to Office of Teaching, Learning and Student Support Services and Carrie Messler at Kane. Um, because I'm happy to report on the course passings, improvements, um, as well as accountability statuses of the schools. Go to the next slide. So I encourage you to look at these as like a heat map, not as total improvements because overall we've had improvements in the first two columns. Compare quarter one to quarter two, all courses passed. And um, since you spoke Carrie, I was kind of looking at the numbers while you were talking. And you know, the percentages greatly increased from quarter one to quarter two in terms of students passing. So kudos to Kane, not the only school that has done that in the elementary level. Uh, the majority of schools have had an increase in the percentage of students passing. Um, I'll also note that Pleasant Valley looks like a heat map of turning all red. However, overall, they've had improvements in the number of students passing as well. Next one is the secondary course failures. We have to change the title of the slide because it's like course failures indicates negativity. Um, but this too has shown great improvement. I've also, uh, we neglected to offer comparison from twenty-two, twenty-three, so I took a look at that. And overall, we had, um, we did have an increase in passing of all courses at this same time from last year. Um, as well as a decrease in the number of students failing three or more courses at the same time in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, I, if you'd like, I can provide that for you um, through Mr. DiCaprio at a later time. So some celebrations is S C L A and Big Picture saw an increase in the percentage of students passing all courses and a decrease in the percentage of students failing one, two or three courses at that time. Um, I'd also like to share that, you know, an overall increase in the percentage of students passing all courses is a secondary level, but we do recognize that there is more work to be done. Um, it is interesting to also correlate the course failures with the attendance information um, and the improvements in attendance. Um, and I took a little bit of a deeper dive uh, with the data team uh, this week to see if there's a specific correlation and we do see that the rate of attendance is associated with course failures. Um, we also identified, which I've heard you ask at multiple um, board meetings in the past about um, the subgroup percentages. And we have, um, I have noted that Hispanic and um, Latino groups do have not only the highest uh, chronic absenteeism rate, but also the highest course failing rate. So we'll dive into that a little bit deeper and support our schools the best we can and follow up with those uh, the D T S E school reviews to implement the recommendations that will support that work. The next slide is um, a repetition of so now, so what, now what? Which we have continued to implement. Um, what I'd like to point out here is although this may reference to many of us, a highlight on the high school, commitment one and commitment two are a focus for all grade levels K twelve. So even at um, the kindergarten level through middle school and we have these conversations during the school reviews, um, we are focusing on the reduction of students failing courses. We are making the improvements in instruction, making the improvements in our curriculum base to improve the instruction to fo- to help with the learning for the students. And commitment number two, increasing student connectedness by providing opportunities for students to build positive, meaningful relationships with staff. That's happening at all levels, K twelve. It's not just a high school commitment. I'm gonna go to the next slide. And now I'd like to share the accountability status, which I believe you've all seen before. And I'll just reference and reiterate, you can go to the next slide. The last column um, shows an improvement in our accountability status. I'll highlight quickly, C S I is Comprehensive School Improvement, uh, which is the lowest performing status um, of schools in New York State. A T S I is Additional Targeted Support Improvement. That's the state ed, um, state ed offers. And then L S I is the comparison to good standing. And we can see here that um, many of you may remember that in late two thousand twenty-three, confirmed in January of twenty twenty-four, um, State Education Department adjusted the accountabilities based on the twenty-one, twenty-two assessments compared to twenty-two, twenty-three. And with that, we now have decreased from ten C S I schools to only seven. And we have increased from four L S I schools to seven. Very excited and proud of that work. And very proud of our principals with the work that they're doing.
Thank you. We will now transition to the presentation from the Office of Student Support Services and specifically Special Ed led by Assistant Superintendent Work.
Oh, just push the middle thing down. Can you go back? Okay. I'll have to show Jessica. Okay, so thank you for the opportunity tonight to present an update on our special education programs and services. I'm gonna start us off and then pass the presentation over to our Director of Special Education, Jessica Allen. She will also be joined by some of our team members to include Assistant Director Lisa Mead and the team at Center City where we have a new program this year. As always, we start with our vision tagline and organizational values. Next slide. Nope, back one. Followed by our strategic planning pillars. You will definitely see examples of the work of all four of these pillars uh, throughout the presentation this evening. Next slide, Brian. Okay. This slide shows the organizational chart of the Office of Student Support Services. I've highlighted in yellow the positions that are specifically aimed at supporting the special education continuum. This includes the directors, Jessica Allen, two assistant directors at the elementary level, Stephen Kraus and newly appointed Trinise Leary. Assistant Director Lisa Mead covers the middle schools. And at the high school, Carolyn Manzella is the Coordinator of Student Support Services, which was a position that we created last year by repurposing the Special Education Department Chair when that person retired. Having a coordinator full-time based out of the high school assists Dennis in the day-to-day operational oversight of the special education programs there. She helps with supervision and training of paraprofessionals, supports special ed teachers, does professional development and works directly with students and families. We also have a project manager named Lauren Shower who assists in ensuring regulatory compliance. She oversees the team of Committee on Special Education or C S E Secretaries and our Medicaid Coordinator. And she helps us to manage our budget, most importantly. The C S E Secretaries provide direct centralized clerical support to our school psychologists in the buildings who are chairing the C S Es. And we have several related service providers on our district team as well to include the Committee on Preschool Special Education, speech therapists, social workers and psychologists who focus on a variety of areas to include evaluations, behavior support, assistive technology and the other positions on the organizational chart, the blue, also support special education, but just not exclusively. For example, we have two behavior specialists who are instrumental in supporting both our special and general education programs. And I will now turn you over to Jessica Allen.
Good evening, Superintendent Soler, Board of Education, Community Members. I would like to start this presentation by discussing the overall purpose of special education, which is to meet the unique needs of students with disabilities by way of specially designed instruction and high-quality programming. Special education programming focuses on supporting students to close educational gaps, increase proficiency and give students greater access to least restrictive environment, which means maximum access to general education peers and programming. We reevaluate students at least every three years to determine whether students continue to qualify as having a disability. Indeed, the primary goal of special education is to help students to close gaps in their academic, social, emotional and physical functioning so that they can be declassified and return to general education programming. For students with more lifelong disabilities, special education serves the purpose of maximizing student access to learning, providing necessary modifications and accommodations to the learning environment and plan for student transition into adult programming, college and careers. It's important to remember that over-service is disservice, meaning that can, it can actually be harmful to students to provide overly restrictive programming or overly intensive supports. Special education should promote student independence, teach self-advocacy skills and ensure that students have programming within the least restrictive setting that can meet their needs. We're still on the same slide, by the way. While reviewing overall performance and proficiency data for students with disabilities, it's important to remember when considering this particular group of students that students with disabilities is the only recorded group who by very definition only qualify as a member of that group due to having an educational disability which impacts their academic, social, emotional, behavioral and physical functioning to the extent that it significantly impacts their performance and participation in school. Students can have impairments and even educational disabilities in so much that they may require general education tiered supports and interventions or possibly even a five oh four plan to provide accommodations and modifications without meeting the criteria of having an educational disability. When students with disabilities have received specialized instruction and have successfully closed gaps, they no longer qualify as having a disability and are then declassified. Thus, when reviewing data about this group's academic learning indicators, please note that most students who are functioning proficiently would subsequently be declassified and no longer qualify under the students with disabilities category. If you would please draw your attention to the packets that we provided for you. You'll find our twenty twenty-three through twenty-five special education plan, a map of where each special education program is located for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the I E P Services Guide for twenty-three, twenty-four, each of which provide more in-depth description of the continuum of special education programming we have in Schenectady. The Schenectady City School District currently has a relatively extensive special education continuum consisting of a variety of programs broken up by student learner characteristics. This continuum is listed from least to most restrictive. It's important to understand that under state and federal regulations, a C S E Committee on Special Education Committee is required to program for students with disabilities within the least restrictive environment or L R E. L R E means that a student is receiving special education services that provide the student with educational benefit to make meaningful progress while providing that student with maximum participation to students without disabilities. Keeping a student within their home school and around non-disabled peers as well as the amount of time out of regular class are factors that are considered when determining least restrictive environment. Looking at our Special Education Programs and Services Guide, you will see that we offer many different program types as well as specialized programs such as our Bridges Program that supports students with high-functioning autism, our Applied Behavior Analysis or A B A, Intensive Skill Strand, which supports students with significant needs related to autism, our Oasis Program, which supports students with severe anxiety or school phobia, and various levels of intensive skills and social development classrooms divided by learner characteristics. These programs include various ratios of support from fifteen one to one to twelve one to one and even as low as eight one two. So the, the first number indicates how many students, the second number, how many teachers and the third number within those ratios is um, how many paraprofessional supports are in that classroom. We even have classes as small as six one two, six one three and twelve one three to one, which means every three students gets one paraprofessional support. As staff to student ratios increase, the restrictiveness of the programs increase. Over the last several years, Schenectady has had increases in our number of students with autism spectrum along with concomitant significant mental health needs. So we will look to expand our continuum next year to fill this gap in programming. Schenectady has one of the most extensive special education continuums in the region. In deciding on program location, we attempt to provide specific types of programming within specific attendance zones so as to keep students as close to their home zone as possible, although we can't provide every program in every school. When student needs can no longer be met within our in-district programming, we may need to look to outside placements such as special schools, B O Cs placements and even residential placements to program for students with much more significant needs. Okay, the chart here represents our current students with disabilities count by disability classification category. There are thirteen different disability classification categories that enable a student to be found eligible for special education. When students are preschool age, they are able to be classified under the Committee on Preschool Special Education or C P S D as simply a preschooler with a disability. But when students transition to school age, students must qualify based on very specific criteria under each disability classification category. As you can see by the chart, the majority of our students fall within the other health impaired, speech or language impaired or learning disability classification categories with a rising number of students classified as having autism spectrum disorder. Other health impairment refers to a student whose medical or mental health diagnosis has a significant impact on that student's participation and functioning in school. The graphic here shows the percentage of staff that we have within the Student Support Services and Special Education Bucket based on our two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three P D six report, which is our mechanism for state reporting. We current, we're currently in the process of inputting data for our twenty-three, twenty-four P D six report and that will actually be certified on Friday. Staff are accounted for within the P D six umbrella include special education teachers, teaching assistants, school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, speech therapists, nursing staff, paraprofessionals and occupational therapists. In addition to the staff listed above, we also outsource specific positions such as our physical therapists, most of our occupational therapists, our music therapist, orientation and mobility specialist, teacher of the visually impaired and teacher of the deaf, primarily to B O Cs and a couple other staffing agencies. I'm sorry? Oh, I apologize. Um, our social work number actually was, was printed incorrectly. It should say fifty-eight, not seventy-eight. Don't quite have that many. In evaluating our special education program, our Student Support Services team examines the following key indicators. I'm sorry, you can move to the next slide. Yeah, thank you. The following key indicators to measure progress and derive goals for areas of improvement from one year to the next. You've already heard about suspension during the Student Support Services presentation on February seventh and attendance this evening. So we will not dig too deeply into that data again. Other indicators we will be reviewing today include classification rate. We will talk a little bit about suspension rate just to provide some context and relative risk ratio. Academic outcomes in E L A and math. academic outcomes in ELA and math, declassification rate, and graduation rate. We closely monitor the indicators above on a regular basis, monthly, quarterly, and yearly in order to inform ongoing decisions regarding special education programming. This chart represents our classification rate over the last eight years. Looking further back to 2012-13's school year, we had a classification rate as high as 22%. So the district has made significant improvement in our classification rate over time. We have done this by expanding our tiered supports, implementing multi-tiered systems of supports, or MTSS, through the School-Based Support Team, or SBST, planning process, and by offering academic intervention services. Our current classification rate as of our last January data poll was 17.76. Classification rate varies greatly from the start to the end of each school year as the district does have a very high rate of transience. And we regularly have a very large percentage of students with disabilities moving into and out of the district. In the 2324 school year alone thus far, we have had almost twice as many students with disabilities move into the district as students with disabilities move out of the district. So that does impact classification rate. On this slide for your reference, we've also listed a few local and similar statewide school district data to allow you to see how our classification rate compares to similar and nearby school districts. And you will see that our classification rate is quite comparable to districts such as Albany City, Niskiuna, Scotia, North Colony, and Newburgh. Okay, so now we're looking at the relative risk ratio for classification for students with disabilities, which is the risk of a student being classified compared to all recorded groups. The overall goal for relative risk ratio would be a 1.0%, which would mean we were exactly proportionate across all groups. This slide shows the relative risk ratio for students in the district who are classified. As you can see, significant disproportionality does not exist between groups based on relative risk of being classified. While there is an under-representation of Asian students within the Students with Disabilities Recorded Group, there are no groups with statistically significant relative risk ratio. And the one with the highest percentage, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander group, includes a very small sample size, which affects the risk ratio. This chart shows that in Schenectady, in general, we are proportionate in our classification across recorded groups. But we need to closely monitor our classification of students who are Hispanic or Latino to ensure that what we are seeing is a disability versus impact of English language learning or language barriers. Relative risk ratio for students with disabilities was a metric previously reported by Andrea on February 7th, and it was noted that students with disabilities were 1.8 times more likely to be suspended than their non-disabled peers. Relative risk for suspension means the risk of a student with a disability being suspended as compared to all students being suspended. Again, we are looking for a 1.0 relative risk ratio for each subgroup in order to be exactly proportionate. I do want to piggyback onto this conversation a little bit about relative risk ratio by discussing the rights of students with disabilities around the discipline and suspension process through IDEA, the Individuals with Education Act, and the Office of Civil Rights Law. Students with disabilities defined as a student with an IEP or a 504 plan have accommodations, modifications, programs, and services that they are legally entitled to through their IEP or 504 plan. If a student loses access to his or her designated IEP or 504 program and services for 10 or more days within the course of a school year due to the same pattern of behavior, this constitutes a disciplinary change in placement, or DCP. In other words, the student's placement has effectually been changed through the suspension process, taking the student away from access to IEP or 504 prescribed interventions. This is not to say that all suspensions that accumulate to greater than 10 days are a DCP. It's only considered a disciplinary change in placement if the student has a pattern of the same behavior that's causing the suspension. Student behavior is not changed through suspension. It's changed through appropriate and targeted interventions. This could include holding CSE meetings to review accommodations and modifications, considerations for changes in programming, completion of a functional behavioral assessment, implementation of a behavior intervention plan, among other things. When students have started a pattern toward accumulating suspensions for patterns of behavior, or any time a student goes to a superintendent's hearing for a long-term suspension, that student must have a manifestation CSE meeting to look at the behavior leading to the suspension, whether it was caused by or significantly related to the student's disability or by the school district's failure to properly implement the IEP, whether an FBA, Functional Behavioral Assessment, or Behavior Plan, should be developed or modified, and whether programmatic changes are needed to support the student and reduce the likelihood of incurring further suspension. We have provided extensive training on the DCP process to school psychologists, special educators, and building and district administrators, but more work and professional development is needed as we continue to monitor suspension for students with disabilities. Because the district was cited for disproportionality in suspending students with disabilities, the district has been charged with completing an Indicator 4A/4B internal review with the support of our New York State Education Regional Associate. And this will take place next week, Monday, March 4th. This review will help us identify trends and plan steps towards improving disciplinary data for students with disabilities. We also have invited some principals across levels to participate in this process as a means of embedded professional development. This slide was just presented in a little bit of a different way in the Quarterly Academic Report. But just to recap, as you can see, students with disabilities made progress on I-Ready reading assessments from quarter one to quarter two, similarly to students without disabilities, although we're hoping for more. We saw about a 1% growth in students moving to above-grade level and a 6% growth in students moving from the red to yellow category. Additionally, there was a 5% reduction in the number of students reading three years below grade level to two years below grade level. This indicates gap closure. Please recall that oftentimes, once most classifications of students with disabilities are reading on grade level, this would often result in a recommendation of declassification, so those students would no longer be represented within this sample. It's important to keep that caveat in mind when we're looking at academic growth for students with disabilities. Once a student no longer has an educational impact, they no longer continue to qualify as a student with a disability. This slide was also just presented in a different fashion in the Quarterly Report, but it's important to note that we have also seen an increase in the number of students performing math on or within one year below grade level, with increases in the green and yellow portions for I-Ready math and reductions in the number of students performing two to three years below in math as designated by the red sections of the graph. Declassification. This slide represents the number of students who were declassified over the last two and a half years. So the last number is actually the number of students who have been declassified this year alone. Students are eligible for declassification at reevaluation if they no longer meet criteria as being a student with a disability. This may mean they have closed academic gaps or that their disability no longer impacts their participation in school and no longer requires specially-designed instruction. Students who are declassified are eligible to receive one additional year of declassification support services and may continue to be eligible for accommodations and eligibility for the safety net if they're declassified in eighth grade or beyond. This chart shows the graduation rate for students with disabilities with the red line showing Schenectady High School and the blue line showing all other Schenectady locations, which include out-of-district, private, and BOSI's placements, over a 10-years span. The data is shown by a cohort year, so the 2019 data actually represents the class that just graduated in 2023. As you can see, the data for students with disabilities follows a generally upward trend with a bit of a dip last school year due to the fact that COVID exemptions were not able to be utilized as greatly beginning with the 2023 graduated students. This slide outlines the strategies and initiatives that the department is working towards to address the data points that we use to monitor special education. In order to address the initiatives mentioned here, we employ the following strategies. We work in close collaboration with the Office of Teaching and Learning as well as principals within buildings to support students in order to provide tiered interventions and supports and high-quality initial instruction so as to avoid students needing to be classified as having a disability. RTI, or Response to Intervention, is a mandate in New York State. Thus, we need to ensure that we have a strong system of multi-tiered supports to provide students with what they need as early as they need it. If a strong MTSS system is not in place, it could lead to over-classification in special education. Members of the Student Support Services and Teaching and Learning Teams participate in an initial CSE referral committee that meets on Friday mornings to review referral packets for students who are referred for CSE classification by school teams or by parents. At that meeting, we look at previous MTSS supports, School-Based Support Team notes, intervention data, Tier Two Behavior Plans, attendance data, and academic data in order to best inform next steps prior to the student sitting at the initial eligibility meeting. Student Support Services Administration, Teaching and Learning Administrators, and Building Administrators all participate in district walk-throughs where we look at Tier One classroom practices, including classroom management, implementation of curriculum, instructional strategies, and student engagement, providing teachers with in-the-moment feedback as well as helping us identify trends. This is important in ensuring that we're holding students with disabilities to high expectations and giving them every possible opportunity to receive high-quality initial instruction. We use this data to inform planned professional development for various groups within the special education umbrella. Each year, each school building's special education team meets with the district-level Special Education Administration Team in projecting student programming for the following school year. This process helps inform budget and staffing, but it also ensures that decisions are made equitably, are data-driven, and are consistent across grade levels and buildings in order to keep students in the least restrictive environment. The district utilizes our behavior specialist and instructional coaching resources to support new teachers as well as teachers who may request or need additional support, coaching, feedback, and T-based planning. Our Behavior Specialist Team supports teachers and teams with classroom management, Tier Two Behavior Supports, Functional Behavioral Assessments, and Behavior Intervention Plan Development. Our Special Education Instructional Coach supports new special education teachers as well as special education teachers who may be in need of additional support. In this next section, we're going to highlight some of our newly implemented programs and initiatives, which you'll hear more in depth about in our future slides and presentations. This includes our School-to-Work Program at Center City, Big Picture Learning, adoption of our new New York State Alternative Assessment Curriculum, K-12, the addition of our new Special Education PTO, the creation of updated resources for parents, which will include a website as well as paper-based brochures that will be translated into multiple languages. We have also created a new assistive technology team and have begun partnering with a board-certified behavior analyst to improve our intensive autism programming, as well as the addition of music therapy this year. To kick this off, I'll ask Principal Chris Chang, Special Education Teacher Tajah Umar, and Social Worker Tameisha Neighbors to present information about our newly-created School-to-Work Alternative Assessment Transition Program.
Welcome.
Good evening, Board. I have the privilege tonight, we have the privilege tonight, to talk to you about our brand-new Center City New York State Alternately Assessed Intensive Skills Class. As you know, I'm Christopher Chang, principal for our downtown campus. This is Tajah Umar, who is our classroom teacher, and Tameisha Neighbors, who is our school social worker. This very exciting and innovative classroom, which you'll actually get to see a little peek of in just a couple minutes, is located within, nestled right within, our Early College High School program downtown. In fact, the classroom is right next to one of our English classrooms for our Early College students. Our team works to ensure that our students, actually, we should be on the next slide, sorry. It's such a good slide. It's my favorite slide. I mean, look at Tayshaun's happiness there on the left. He is just super psyched. They were at MISA, I think, that day. Is that right? Great picture. She took it. So, and our team works really, really hard to ensure that there are opportunities for our students in the School-to-Work Program have opportunity to interact with our Early College and the High School Program. If, go to the next slide. So this program serves students who are 18 to 21 years old and are preparing to transition into the next phase of their lives. We partner directly with Schenectady ARC, who is an excellent partner. And with their support, we have our students learn life skills, explore job opportunities, vocational train, career training, and they take part in things like mock job interviews to gain experience and prepare for real-life interviews in their future. At this point, I want to turn things over to Ms. Umar to talk to you about our curriculum and some of the really cool classroom uses and experiences the students have been getting.
Thank you. My name is Tajah Umar, and I've been working with this classroom for just this year. I started in September when the classroom opened. And we are actually utilizing the Unique Learning Curriculum, which is a really great curriculum that I love using. And I thank the special department repeatedly for bringing this curriculum. But we use the Unique Learning Curriculum to base most of our academics and most of our learning opportunities through. It's a comprehensive program that brings the New York State curriculum in differentiated levels to students that some have reading skills, some are non-readers, some use like visual cues or pictures. But we can present the same article to three different types of learners, and they can all participate in the same way. They can participate in group activities without needing any additional accommodations because they're all receiving the same materials, and they might just be receiving it in like a differentiated style. The thing that I love about the program is that we are, we're not, you know, in the back corner of any building or, you know, we're not in like an outside trailer. We are right in the mix of things in the high school, and we're in the Early College setting. So it's a very academic environment, and it's very academically charged for students that may not have many academic skills. But we still work on those same skills. Some of them are like money skills, time skills, things that you would use when, say, building a resume. One of the things that I really like is that a lot of the students, when we talk about going into the job force or the workforce, they'll list jobs like cashier or maybe like working at a store, and that's about it. And I do a lot of integration of like, oh, you could be a chef, or there are sports jobs. There are, okay, you really like sports, but you can't play. There are sports reporters, there are statisticians. There are just different types of jobs out there. And introducing them to the idea that jobs are not just one thing. And many of the students will say things like, oh, well, I don't have great skills in this. And then we'll look at like, what other things within that arena of what you're interested in can you do? And I like to bring in outside speakers. We brought in a chef early in the school year when we started doing some cooking activities. And actually, there's a slide up here. He presented on how he started at Wendy's in high school and then moved into kind of like catering businesses and being a waiter. And then he was able to get his first chef job. And a lot of the students just kind of like, they were really interested in like, oh, okay, so you started doing this, and then, oh, you moved into this, and then now he actually works at one of the local colleges as the head chef. And they found that really interesting how, like, you know, a job at Wendy's, you might look at that as like, okay, like, who really wants that? But then it got him to this place where he said he just kept meeting new people and doing different things. So these are the types of experiences that students get to have, even if that might not be their reality in the future. They get the exposure to seeing that as a reality that they could work towards. And that's really important for that's really important for students that may or may not have ever had that experience before. There's also a video at the end, so I won't go too much into what we do, so.
We can probably toss it to the video. Thank you to Justin for his help.
Thank you.
He was in our, in our building a couple weeks ago. Should be the next slide.
Hi, my name is Tajah Umar. I am the teacher in the NISA Intensive Skills Classroom at Center City. This is a program for students ages 17 to 21. It's a transitional level program for students that are aging out of high school but are still needing vocational skills, still needing work skills, socialization skills, other things that need to be provided in the specialized and special education curriculum but are not accessible yet through, like, a college setting or another setting. So, in the classroom portion of our suite program, students are working on math, computing, they're working on functional life skills, working on making purchases, making sales, selling to students that are in the building. We also have high school classes here, so students get to promote theirs in snack store. Students will also be making sales today, working as cashiers. We like to split the students into two teams, so students should be working together, taking turns doing the math computing at the register, taking money from a customer, providing the proper change, counting that change out, and that is a functional life skill that they can take with them when they go into work setting or supportive desk. Yeah? Okay.
Tables, dust.
Yep, you dust the tables. What else do you do at the Salvation Army?
Vacuum.
The improvement I seen since September to now is that there's students who didn't know how to read or, you know, spell, and they can really do it well now. They can read, they can spell, and they can ask questions that they can even raise their hands to ask for help.
I'm hearing that students are proud of the work that they are able to accomplish, proud of the skills that they have developed thus far, and they have greater ideas for future goals that they want to set for themselves.
And the future I want to be in my driver's license, I could drive to work.
A goal I have for myself is working with animals and helping them.
I'm proud of it in 2024, working as a team, not to finish school, getting a job to get my own voice.
One thing I'm really excited about this year is that we got a grant from Eastern Parkway United Methodist Church, and we are going to have a lunch group with our class and early college and the high school class, we're going to have 10 from each group, and they're going to eat lunch together, build community, build social skills, and learn to get to know each other and enjoy our differences together.
I just love that video, thank you so much, Justin, for making that, and thank you to my team here, you guys are doing an absolutely amazing job at, at really giving students a lot of access, so appreciate it.
Jessica, can you just highlight, if we did not have that program, what would happen to those students?
They would sit in a relatively similar classroom environment, they might do some School-to-Work, but it's certainly not to the level that they're at, it's not the exposure that they have right now to other students. So, once students hit about, you know, ninth grade and above, they tend to be in the, kind of, the same program up until age 21, so that can be a really long time, and we just weren't pushing the kids as much as we needed to, so this provided a really great opportunity for students to get out and about in the community. Okay, so this year, we also kicked off our first-ever Special Education Parent Teacher Organization, or SEPTO, here in Schenectady. This effort has been led by Assistant Director Stephen Kraus and myself. We have had amazing participation from parents as well as district teachers, therapists, and administration. Through collaboration with all of these groups, the Special Education PTO strives to create a supportive community where every child can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. The topics for collaboration and conversation this year have included understanding the IEP, diversity, equity, and inclusion for special education, creating partnerships between home and school, and community resources. These meetings afford us an opportunity to provide resources and information to empower parents with the knowledge and tools needed to actively participate in the IEP planning process. By understanding their child's unique needs and rights, parents can effectively advocate for appropriate support and services. We recognize the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion in special education. Our organization promotes awareness and understanding of all students. We work to ensure that all students receive equitable access to opportunities and resources. We believe that strong partnerships between home and school are essential for student success. By working together as partners with parents, we can better support the holistic development of our students. The SEPTO is an important forum for us to gain feedback and insight from families about how to best meet the needs of students with disabilities. Our organization serves as a bridge between families and community resources. We provide information about local support services, therapy programs, recreational activities, and advocacy groups. By connecting families with relevant resources, we help create a supportive network that extends beyond the school environment. Based on our conversations with families and collaboration with our Special Education and Student Support Services personnel, we're currently in the process of designing and launching our own special education website, which will include many embedded resources and external links to additional resources in the field of special education. To support the needs of less-tech-savvy parents and community members, we're also currently developing low-tech, paper-based pamphlets to provide families with information and resources about special education and related topics to help families better understand the special education process and advocate for their students' needs. Okay, and now I would like to invite up Assistant Director Lisa Mead, she's our Assistant Director of Special Education, and she's going to discuss our new assistive technology team.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to spotlight the work that's been done in this area. Assistive technology, in the simplest terms, is most commonly used for communication purposes or to improve academic access for students. I'll give some more examples of what I mean exactly by that in a moment. Two years ago, the vision that both Jess Allen and Andrea Tote-Freeman had was that we would create our own in-district assistive technology program instead of contracting through BOSIS for that service. Having our own in-district program has many benefits, with the most important one being able to do more for our students. In 2022, '23, we began with assigning a district speech pathologist to work with an independent assistive tech consultant, Deb Gerolds, with us. We took that year to establish procedures, create protocols and forms, provide a ton of professional development. That first year, we completed 16 evaluations. This year, we will likely triple the number of evaluations we complete for our students. Most of our evaluations involve determining the most appropriate communication device and programs for our students. These are typically for students with autism, and as Jess referenced earlier, you might recall that that's a number that is growing in our district. Sometimes assistive tech or AT is misunderstood, and others think it is just simply about handing a student a Chromebook or an iPad, but it's so much more than that. Our amazing team on the screen, that's Deb and Teresa, and Teresa is also here in the flesh, so we're really excited to have her here. They trial many different programs and approaches with students that are undergoing an evaluation to make sure we're making individualized and personalized recommendations for kids. From start to finish, the process begins with a referral from the team, consulting with the parent and family about their desires in regards to assistive tech, then conducting the evaluation, writing the evaluation, presenting the evaluation at a CSE meeting, updating the IEP, then training the student, family, and the entire teaching team on the assistive tech device and program. It also includes ongoing direct service by Teresa, again, the amazing, beautiful person in pink and in the flesh right there. This direct service also takes place all year long, so once you qualify for assistive tech, we continue to provide direct service to make sure things are going okay. As we have expanded the number of students eligible for AT services, we have stretched Teresa's schedule just as much. I sometimes joke she should have a golf cart to get around the district. Note, she is our primary AT provider, serving all of our buildings and even our students in private schools. For this year, we are combining our efforts with the EdTech Department with Kurt Redmond's help and our amazing EdTech coaches, and this is really on purpose because we believe what we recommend for students with disabilities should match the district vision for technology. We also believe that some of what we want to do for students with disabilities could help all students. And, and, and support what we know about a universal design for learning. Just note, I want, just a shout-out in case the EdTech coaches are listening, they've been a wonderful collaborator with us. For our district, the majority of the assistive tech we provide right now is in that yellow box. So, our hardware needs are communication devices, adapted computers or keyboards, magnification delivery systems, a lot of wireless earbuds, and eye-gaze equipment. So, eye-gaze equipment is somebody who maybe doesn't have mobility with their hands to use an iPad, but they can use their eyes to actually communicate. Pretty, really cool stuff to watch and learn. Communication systems are our most popular need right now. Without a communication system, some of our students literally have no voice at all. Zero. So, it's important to all of us that we make those devices a priority. We help families also secure devices for home through their own insurance as well and help them every step of the way. In regards to software, we're finding great success in the premium version of Google Read and Write, which is listed on the screen. That software has many tools to assist with reading, writing, studying, including text-to-speech, speech-to-text, word prediction, summarizing, and simplifying language. I could tell you 20 more things with it, but you already have a big board meeting, so I'll stop. Right now, we actually have a higher demand for licenses than I have available because it's a tool so many special ed teachers want to use with their entire classrooms and not just with students with assistive technology. Thank you for the opportunity to share it, Jess.
Thank you, Lisa, and assistive technology team. Okay, so now that we've heard about some of the wonderful new initiatives that we've implemented this year, I do want to discuss some of the significant challenges in the field of special education, not just within Schenectady, but regionally and statewide. I want to make sure that the, I can address this to help the board understand some of the work that we're engaging with and overcoming on a day-to-day basis. Perhaps the most significant challenge this year is the significant teacher shortages in special education, as well as speech and language pathologists at this time. This is a nationwide, statewide, and regional problem and is not unique to Schenectady. Due to this special education shortage, we're also experiencing a major shortage of out-of-district programming options available for students whose needs rise above what we can manage within our school district buildings. Generally speaking, this includes students with significant social, emotional, and behavioral disorders, and students with severe autism spectrum disorders, along with accompanying significant behaviors or concomitant mental health disorders. We currently have a significant number of students on tutoring awaiting an out-of-district placement, which is the highest, this is the highest we've actually seen that number in 10 years. Also, as a result of special education teacher shortages, we're seeing a significant number of students that are on waitlists for preschool programming through CPSE, which is leading to not only difficulty evaluating students referred to CPSE in a timely manner, but also students who qualify for center-based preschool programming but are unable to access them due to lack of space and openings within the programs. This significantly impacts the severity of need upon students entering kindergarten when students have not had consistent access to preschool programming despite their needs related to their disability, which has a compounding effect once they enter school-age programming. The general lack of space within our school buildings also has an impact on special education in so much that if new classrooms need to be opened to support new special education programs, there's significant difficulty in finding space to accommodate these classrooms. We're hoping that the upcoming capital projects will help with this matter. We already discussed in previous slides how MTSS systems can have an impact on special education classification rates, so that does continue to be something that we are working on, but it is something that, that does pose some obstacles. Lastly, student behavior is sometimes viewed by educators as a disability when the student may not meet eligibility criteria as having a disability and may not require specially-designed instruction, but rather would benefit from tiered interventions, connection to outside resources, implementation of trauma-informed practices, as well as considering the need to conduct a functional behavioral assessment or implement behavior intervention plans. Looking to the year ahead, we'll be focusing on the following initiatives, which will support equity for students with disabilities. Given the current teacher shortage in special education, we will heavily focus on getting an early jump at posting and hiring for vacant school year and extended school year, which is summer school, positions to recruit the best candidates, while also thinking about and keeping our mind on efforts we're implementing to retain high-quality staff within specialized programs. We will continue to expand our assistive technology team and resources to ensure that students are able to receive appropriate assistive technology and augmentative communication resources in order to give students a greater level of access and accommodations and close academic performance gaps for students with disabilities. We will complete our Bridges Continuum to be offered across the entire K through 12 grade span. We will add another 0.8 FTE of special education instructional coaching, which we'll contract with through BOSIS. We completed an Equity in Resources inventory district-wide this year, which brought to light some areas where special education did not have the same level of resources as general education classrooms, and will attempt to equalize resources through upcoming budget items, which will include ViewSonic boards, noise-canceling headphones, sensory tools, flexible seating options, wheelchair-accessible desks, touchscreen Chromebooks, and additional iPads to serve as communication devices for non-speaking students. Lastly, we will look to expand our continuum of special education programming to include a new program strand that focuses on servicing students with autism spectrum disorders as well as concomitant mental health needs. An additional section of our NISA New York State Alternative Assessment Classroom that can support student transition needs specifically for students who need more of a sheltered workshop model of job coaching, and increased support of a board-certified behavior analyst to support our ABA programs. Through these strategies, as well as ongoing data analysis and planning, we hope to ensure and continue to improve on providing high-quality programming for students with disabilities. And we will look forward to your follow-up questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you both departments for your presentations, and thank you staff for sharing your experiences, we really appreciate it, and we will send you questions. Thank you very much. And I'll take a few minutes, like, two minutes if anyone wants to leave before we discuss the superintendent search. Have a good evening, those that are leaving. Okay, so at this time, I will provide a superintendent search update, which will address the Board's search processes while revisiting the timeline. So, let's move to the process and timeline illustration on the next slide. So, this illustration outlines what has occurred or has been completed. You'll notice that the last item on the slide is for today, stay tuned, we will share additional information there. Vice President Nohalani and I will provide an overview and discuss next steps, but let's quickly review our journey as of today. So, January 10th, the Board of Education entered into executive session following the regular meeting agenda to discuss a personnel item related to the resignation announcement. January 24th, we held a public work session discussing the options for selecting a superintendent. Board members shared their thoughts and individual views regarding how to proceed. Attorney Douglas Gerhart spoke about the pros and cons of hiring an internal candidate and launching a national search. He also spoke about the differences between an open search and a closed search. Most members at that meeting were leaning towards exploring Most members at that meeting were leaning towards exploring an internal candidate, but wanted to get additional feedback from students, families, staff, and the community. That evening, we held an executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters. So throughout January, if you look at that slide, we held informal interviews and discussions with members of the executive leadership team, also known as ELT, to determine their interest in being considered for the superintendency position. We elicited feedback from the bargaining units, district clerks, and we had informal conversations with district faculty, staff, students, and community members. We also received input, including suggestions and ideas through email and Let's Talk. Based on the culmination of factors such as the BOE public conversation on January twenty-fourth, the informal meetings with staff, and feedback from a wide range of stakeholders, we decided to move forward with an internal candidate position. We also decided to launch a community survey to seek input about our community wants, what the community wants from the superintendent to focus on for the first hundred days. The board feels that this is important, so we can partner with the superintendent to guide his preliminary and long-term work in their district, in this district. Okay, so January thirtieth to the fifteenth, the survey was launched, and it was launched for about seventeen days. And then, as I mentioned, February twenty-eighth, stay tuned, which is today, we will provide additional information. So next, we will view the input and feedback results from the survey. So this is a snapshot of the responses that we received from the survey, but you'll notice here that you have emails and Let's Talk dialogues, and then we had, and I had, and I know the board has had informal conversations with many, many people. So we've had about eight hundred and three people plus that we have elicited and received responses and input and comments. So we are really happy about this. It has really, it's been very, the feedback that we have received has been immense, so we are very happy and we thank you, and you're going to hear thank you a lot from us because we really appreciate your honesty, candidness, and your willingness to complete the surveys, to talk with us, to email us, to, you know, use Let's Talk. So thank you. We want to also thank Zohanna. So we have a school board representative, we have three actually, and Zohanna is going to be joining us hopefully March sixth, but she, I reached out to her and she actually sent the survey link to many students as well. So that's why in the surveys, there's a large representative of students in the surveys as well, which I think that's wonderful. So, so moving on, overwhelmingly, our community supported and advocated for an internal candidate. So they expressed several reasons why they supported an internal candidate, so I'm going to just share a few. The community would like to, to like someone to continue the work. Our communities, meaning the district and neighboring community, want someone vested in Schenectady. The community prefers a person who resides in Schenectady, an internal candidate that is already up to speed with our plans moving forward. The community feels an internal candidate is more apt to stay for a longer period of time, and some have said we have the talent in-house. There are other comments that were shared, but those were the ones that resonated quite a bit. So the next slide will share a brief overview of the survey launched to the community. So our survey was open to all, you can go back one more again, please. Yeah, thank you. So our survey was open to all, to all residents, students, staff, retired staff, families, constituents, to complete. And the reason why I mentioned specifically like retired staff, because many people on the survey indicated that they are, were retired. The survey was open for seventeen days, and additional information about the surveys on the next slide. So these were the top five responses. These are the themes or the topics. There were way more than these, but what resonated were these five, and I'm just going to read them off just because I know people in the audience and, you know, on TV may not be able to see this. So the first one is safety, school, culture, and climate, and this is not just specifically safety. This encompasses everything in school, culture, and climate, and you'll see that from some of the responses in a few minutes. Internal candidate. Now, today, I'm not going to show some of the, I'm not going to show any responses about the internal candidate, only because people were very specific with names. So just to keep that private and confidential, I'm not going to share the internal candidate responses, but we had a lot, not just from the surveys, but we received many emails, many emails. Yeah, which is great. This is, this is great. This is a good thing. The third one, continue the current work, so we had a lot of comments around that, and you'll see that in a minute. So you'll notice that the ones that are in green, those are the ones that we're going to share some, not all, of the comments that people had shared. Academics and rigor, and then the last one, an analysis of the administration hierarchical structure. Topics around family and community engagement, and mostly with that was that they want that to continue, they think the work is really going well, special ed specifically, and also graduation rates. So notice that the question, just to remind everyone, what should the new superintendent focus on as they enter the district and in their first hundred years as a leader of Schenectady schools? What did I just say? A hundred years? See, I was testing to see if you were listening. So a hundred days. A hundred years, that's, you know, that's commitment. So the reason we ask this question is because we, we want to make sure that when we have our new superintendent, that we have a clear understanding of what our community wants and needs. So this is not just a hundred days, it says a hundred days there, but as all of us know, it's going to take much more than a hundred days. It's going to be short-term goals, but also long-term goals, okay? So those were the questions, those are the top five responses. So personnel items. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session. May I have a motion?
So moved.